All right, good evening, everyone. It is, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the April 11th, 2024, regular board meeting. We're here in the Berlin Room. I think everyone's here. Mr. Jenkins, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Dr. Dabberco.
Here.
Dr. Wallach.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Schreiber.
Here.
All right, if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our agenda. I don't believe there are any amendments to the agenda. I'm hearing none. Mr. Jenkins, or I'm sorry, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right, a discussion. All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes. All right, on to the Board President's Report. Glad to see everybody here. I always love when we have board meetings with so many people. It's exciting. Also, you know, the last meeting we had was right before spring break, so I hope everybody had a really restful time and we're getting back toward the end of the semester, so a lot of excitement. We're going to have a lot of ceremonies at the end of the year as we lead up to graduation and really, you know, this is a very busy and exciting time of year. I don't have a lot to say other than to note that at our last board meeting, it was the first meeting after the levy vote, and as we discussed at that point, there's a lot of implications of that not passing, and there's a lot of discussion that we as a board and the district leadership team are going to continue to have. As I noted at that meeting, our goal is to be as transparent as possible as we're discussing those. So you're going to hear a little bit more about some of the implications of some of the decisions and things that we're going to have to do as moving forward and ways we're going to have to analyze some of those things, and those are going to continue to be parts of our conversation throughout. Our goal is always is to engage the community and provide as much information as we possibly can about the ramifications of that and what the next steps are. As always, I would encourage people to come forward and share thoughts and concerns and ask questions and become informed. The more information that's out there, the better. But again, this will be a continued discussion that we're going to have over time. I just want to make it very clear that that's going to continue. Do we have any committee updates?
Yeah. I feel like I've become the liaison for Facilities Committee, even though Dr. Dabberco and I are both on there. But yes, we did have a Facilities Committee meeting on Wednesday, April 3rd. Part of that discussion was the updates for our school that's opening in the fall, Peach Bowl Crossing, which is still ahead of schedule, so we're glad about that. Olentangie Academy as well, still working on time, so a big thank you again to everybody who's working on that. And of course, you know, part of the discussions that we had were, this was after the levy vote as well, and how that implicates timelines for building the new buildings because, you know, the new students will be coming, the growth is happening, even as graduating seniors move out and new families move into those houses, when people sell and the families turn over, we're going to keep getting students and we still need to accommodate them and try to give them the best experience possible here in Olentangie. So obviously, construction cannot begin right away for the schools that we had planned, but we are still committed to giving them a great experience, finding places for all of our students, and trying to reduce the cost of any future buildings as much as possible with, there's some materials that were pre-ordered, which I think is positive in the long run because as inflation just keeps going up, the cost of materials is going to keep going up, the cost of building new buildings will go up in the next couple of years even just, you know, when we might be able to start building a new school. So if we have some of that stuff ahead of time and it ultimately saves money down the line. So I'm again thankful for all that was shared at the Facility Committee meeting by our staff and by the other community members. There's some excitement about joining the Facility Committee. We have that on our agenda tonight about our new member, which is exciting, and again, I would encourage any community members who feel that this might be something that they're interested in, whether they have a background in construction, engineering, architecture, that's what a lot of our committee consists of, but also just if you're interested in what's going to happen with our facilities in the next few years, like please come to the meetings. We would love to have more members and especially members with younger students who will be around for a while to help usher the new growth and the next phase of the district.
And all of these board committees are open to the public, and it's really important that folks go because that's the nuts and bolts of how decisions are, you know, different ideas are vetted, and we have a finance and audit meeting coming up the 24th. Our treasury folks have received recognition for how they do their job, and if you have questions about the financial conditions of our district, it'd be a great meeting to attend. One more note from Facilities was the tornado update.
Yes.
The new cycle stuff just moves past that crisis, but man, this was amazing how the partners that we have fostered in our district worked to save us learning time. Everything focuses us on our goals of maximizing learning and getting those kids back in the classroom Monday was a Herculean effort, so just, it'll be a long time before we stop talking about how amazing that was, and Mr. Gordon did a great job of going over that. Financial impact is minimized when you can repair stuff, whether it's long-term maintenance or something like the damage done to our facilities. When we can repair those as quickly as possible with partners we've already worked with, it saves our community money. So those are the updates from the committees. Mr. Lester.
Thank you. So not exactly a committee, but for me, being on the school board, one of the great highlights for me is also being able to represent Olentangie on the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees. And this year, I was also invited to serve on OSBA's Cabinet Committee, and we had our first meeting this afternoon, which was really wonderful to sit in person with Director Dakin of the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, as well as Superintendent Kraft. So being in the room with, you know, really the top of the food chain, if you will, in the world of education across the state, and being in that room with fellow school board members from across the state, you know, we each have our own unique challenges, and it was very nice to not only receive legislative updates and understand the priorities. Director Dakin, he emphasized his four priorities are literacy, workforce, accelerated learning for all, and wellness, things that I am pleased to say I think we do exceptionally well here in Olentangie already, but it's nice to know those are the goals at the state level. But not only was, it was a two-way communication, so we as board members were also able to voice concerns and ask questions of these educational leaders. So it was a day well spent, and now I get to be here.
That's good. All right, thanks. Anything else? Good.
It's more of a comment than a report up from a committee, and it's unfortunate Mr. Wright isn't here tonight, but I want to recognize the work of Randy Wright and his team relative to the eclipse. Okay, so we planned to have school off a year ago when we knew the eclipse was coming and traffic was coming, where all the districts across central Ohio kind of panicked at the last minute and didn't adequately plan. So I think it's important to call out when we do call it right and get it right, and I want to thank Randy and his team for getting it right. So thank you.
Yeah, that's a great, I remember when they brought it up a year ago, we're like, "What? What is happening here?" But it was a lot of real thoughtful planning there, so yeah, thanks so much for that. All right, great. We're heading into our presentation, so we've got a whole team here from Sheil Meadows that we're excited to have to talk about Book Creator.
Well, my name's Jenny Schoeff, and I am a fifth grade teacher at Sheil Meadows. As being our building instructional technology coach, I was able to attend a professional development day where we got to learn about Book Creator, which is a platform for students to create and use books online. So there are a range of features, I'm going to kind of briefly go through those. So there's a range of templates that they can use depending on what it is that they're looking to make, as well as built-in integrations with a lot of the tools that we already use in the district and already have access to, which makes the creation for them really streamlined. A big feature is the level of fluency support that it provides. Students are able to record themselves reading and then listen back to themselves reading as well as writing and hearing their writing read back to them. There also are a range of creativity tools such as Auto Draw, and another really strong feature is its level of accessibility. So when we think about maximizing learning for every student, there are a lot of tools there such as speech-to-text, keyboard navigation, language translation that support learners of all kinds.
Hi, I'm Kristi Littenberg. I'm the school counselor at Sheil Meadows, and I was inspired through attending professional development in the summer through Summer Institute, hearing Michelle Pledger speak about the importance of sharing our stories. By doing that, students are able to build connections and build empathy, and then being a part of digital citizenship cohort, I learned about Book Creator, and I thought, what an awesome opportunity to take student voice and choice and combine it with an empathy lesson. And so that's exactly what our students did. They each created pages where they shared pictures that were going to tell their story. In addition, they were able to record their voice, sharing that story, and import it, and then we created books as an entire class.
So those were some of our amazing students' features for their project for Mrs. Littenberg, and then here are a couple other examples from our school. So the left is a comic that was used in one of our English language learning classrooms where students used a comic template to tell the story and to summarize the big ideas of what they read. And the right is a template of what we used in my science class where I gave the students a digital notebook, and it was their job to kind of explore it and dig into it and use it to show their thinking. And now we're going to have a real-life example. So we had our fifth-grade students here with us presented a project at the Olentangie State of the Schools presentation this year, and we had multiple groups, and we just were lucky to bring three with us today, but they're going to share their book about what it means to be a monarch.
Welcome to our Sheil Meadows presentation by Helena. Sheil Meadows kids have lots of friends. Here you can see some of Sheil Meadows' friends, like here is an example of some of our fifth-grade students on National Board Game Day playing board games, and you can see some of our students running on a fundraiser called the Fund Run, and you can also see some fifth-grade students from a couple years ago that are doing an activity called the Chalk Walk. Sheil Meadows staff are amazing. Here you can see some of our staff dress up for some of our holidays like street trail, and there are three of our fifth-grade staff dressed for like, dressed like a decade day.
Multicultural Night. Every once a year, Sheil Meadows has a multicultural night. One year, we had taiko drummers drumming at our school. We also have kids and their family representing their country in the school. We would like to show you a video of taiko drummers.
Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Taiko drummers. Tree Trail. We also have tree trails. Every once a year, we have a tree trail, and teachers and staff dress up and hand candy to students along the way. We also have special days like Play Day, Pajama Day, and other fun days. Whenever we have a day like Play Day or Board Game Day, we celebrate them in a fun way because we don't have them that often.
Now we'll be talking about RISE. RISE is our school acronym, and all of these letters represent something important. This slide talks about R and I. R stands for responsibility. Some examples are owning up to your mistakes, respecting people's boundaries, and staying on task. I stands for inclusive. Some examples for that is including somebody to play with you during your recess, including somebody to work with you, and including somebody to join you. S and E. S stands for safe. Some examples for that is looking straight while walking in the hallway, following the person ahead of you, and listening, most importantly, to your teacher when fire drills, ice drills, or other drills are going on. And lastly, E stands for empathetic. Some examples for that is cheering someone who's on the buddy bench, understanding someone's else's point of view during an argument, and listening to people without interrupting them. Thank you.
Can they wait, Mr. Lester?
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect.
Great. Yeah.
Can you go back to the first slide? I love that monarch. That is awesome. What do you think about that monarch on the front of your cover?
Well, we chose it because there were like other options, but we chose it because there's a good picture of our mascot, Matty the Monarch, and it said our school's name.
I think it's awesome. Thank you. One more thing I want to say, you might not know this, but hundreds of kids come to our school district every year because they want to go to school with you because of stuff like this. So thank you for being the best advertisement on the planet for the best school district in the galaxy.
All right, so fun fact, many years ago, when I was still working in K-12 education, my last role was that of instructional technology coach. So I have a real passion for the use of technology being integrated into the curriculum in a smart way too, right? We're not just sticking technology in for the sake of sticking tech in there, but how does it, I would say the SAMA model, right? So, you know, are we really rethinking the lesson design? I also used to be an ELA teacher, so like the writing component, and I did a book publishing activity with my students many years ago, and it stunk by comparison, you guys. I mean, it might be just that I wasn't that great of a teacher, but also the technology has just come such a long way, and this is such a cooler platform than what I had available to me a few years back. So bravo, well done, everyone.
Can I ask, so when you're creating these books, how do you feel? Like how does it, can you talk a little bit about the experience of it and just how it allows you to create these sorts of things and how you feel about it?
It allows us to like, whatever like we imagine, we can like put it by like taking like links and pictures from like other websites or platforms, and then we can just like put it in here, and like we don't really have to worry about like, like we could just put the pictures on it and yeah.
I love that you could put in a video of the drummers because it combines all of the aspects of the experience. We can read about it, we can see the pictures, and we can actually hear and see the video, so I thought that was super neat.
Well, and you know, you're not just using technology to consume information, you're using the technology to produce a product, right? You're creating something, and that is also incredibly cool, so nice work.
Yeah, it's very, I mean, back when we were in school, you know, we could make a book, we could draw the pictures, and for those of us that weren't the best artists in the world, maybe it didn't come out as well, right? But I really liked your answer, that it allows you to put your imagination out there and to take technology and to really use that to make everything come alive. That's really exciting, so I'm glad that you guys are enjoying it, and I'm also just so incredibly impressed at how good of speakers you are. Come up, this can be a little intimidating to come in front of this many people, but you guys did great. So congratulations, thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
I will say, Miss, I'm very upset that you stole the counselor from my son's elementary school to go to her elementary school because we very much like Ms. Littenberg, so.
Well, and one thing that they had shared earlier, just a reference on that, is they really enjoy the trio, the creativity through their process, so that's what we value for Book Creator as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you all so much. All right, on to the superintendent's report. Top that, Mr. Meyer.
So it's always hard to top when you're following students, but before you leave, I do want to thank Ms. Janegy, Ms. Schoeff, and Ms. Littenberg. There's so many wonderful things that happen across our district on a daily basis, and this is just another one of those things that we can highlight for our students. And again, it's so important about the student experience and how you bring learning to life across our schools. So thank you for creating that culture, and thank you for what you do, and also want to thank all the parents. And I always say this, thank you for sending us such wonderful students each and every day to work with, and it's a privilege and an honor, so thank you.
And they are out.
You know how to clear a room.
Yeah. I know. See? All right, so Mr. O'Brien had mentioned the solar eclipse here at the beginning, but even leading up to the eclipse, although that we had the school day off, there were many lessons that Olentangie teachers, again, across the district integrated throughout their classrooms leading up to the eclipse. So you can see a few pictures from some of our schools here, and then actually, that picture is really cool. So Adam Kadar is part of our Communications Department, so he must have a special lens to get that picture there. And, you know, me personally, just a really cool experience, once-in-a-lifetime experience on the eclipse day, so I personally really enjoyed it.
You know, Mr. O'Brien, to your point a little bit earlier, like it allowed families and communities to be together and to not be scrambling at the last second. My entire block, I mean, they were all out, and just that pre-planning ahead of time, it was really nice.
Well, I was going to say proactive instead of reactive.
Right, that's right.
And I think I also want to highlight the partnership that we have with Delaware County because they were involved a year ago having conversations with us as a school district and the impact on the community, so also want to recognize them as well. Excited to share, so we had honored and recognized 21 semifinalists in the fall for the national merit. So of the 21 semifinalists, 20 of those students are now finalists, so they're national merit finalists, so that represents less than 1% of US high school seniors across the country. So now they all will have the ability to apply for scholarships as they start the next chapter in their lives. Want to highlight Avery here, Liberty Middle School eighth grader. So she is a national finalist, one of 10 out of over 2,000 entries for her 3D design on We Heart Veterans. So this is back in the fall during Veterans Day, and she's a student in Mr. Prey's Technology Class, and there she is pictured with, I gotta move here, veteran Scott Turner. So Scott Turner there is a veteran, so that's who she's pictured with there. This, actually, we just got word today that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of our schools were renewed with a Purple Star designation. So April is the month of the military child, so 20 of our Olentangie schools have received the Purple Star designation from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, and then again, those five schools highlighted there were renewed, and actually, we just got word of that today. Also want to recognize, this is just another thing about student experience, this is part of our high school curriculum where we have interdisciplinary classes with ELA and history. So here's an opportunity where the two teachers in this interdisciplinary class at Berlin brought in two guest speakers, so retired Assistant Special Agent in charge of the United States Secret Service Jeff James talked about the history of the United States Secret Service, and then author Liza Wymer, author of the young adult novel, The Assignment, which was information about real-life scenario that inspired her book on the Holocaust. So just another example in our high school. And again, I talked a little bit about this, so we're going to shift a little bit to levy discussion. So at the last board meeting, obviously, again, disappointed that we did not garner the support needed to pass the ballot issue. So really, what that does for us, we have to make some important decisions coming up here in the next month that will impact the short term of '24, '25. So we continue to analyze resource alignment and student enrollment projections and what that means for our students and our schools moving into next year. So we're currently looking at redistricting, pocket redistricting options that will help balance enrollment across some of our buildings and really at the elementary level at this point, so we're currently looking at that. Obviously, again, we had six modular classrooms this year at Cheshire Elementary, so in order to continue to accommodate growth, that will continue to come to Olentangie, that's another option that we're looking at next year if we have to place modular classrooms at buildings, what those buildings will be. Temporary overflow, so we are currently, this year, we're overflowing students, so really that's something that we'll continue to monitor over the summer months and then into next year. So if we're capped out at a certain grade level, really in an elementary school where we have no more room, then we go into overflow. So obviously, we'll continue to look at that. And again, at the end of the day, this is kind of the last level where there will be some impact on class sizes across the district in order to accommodate our students. So these are things that, as a district leadership team, we're going to continue to analyze, and we will come back to future board meetings to have discussions with the board. I've talked to all five board members, and there is an appetite to have a work session here in the short term. Hopefully, we can get it scheduled maybe within the next couple weeks or three weeks to talk about some of these things as well as longer-term timeline for us and the impact on the district. So superintendent action items tonight, it's the time of year where you will see a lot of retirements, resignations at any year. So you can see we have multiple retirements, so combined years of service to Olentangie, 130 years combined service from the individuals up there on the list retiring, so we definitely want to thank them for their years of service to Olentangie, to the students of Olentangie, and for sure of the families of Olentangie. We have approval of seniors for graduation. This will be the last actual early graduation list that we have. Coming up to the next board meeting, we will approve the big list for this year's graduating class. Also, we have, and this is an annual agenda item, recommendation to approve 24, 25 student handbooks and student fees. Actually, Dr. Fede, this is a discussion item, so he will discuss that here in a few minutes. Business management, we have recommendation to approve agreement with Shore Architects for district roofing projects, again, for the design of those at a cost of a little over $55,000. And then we also, we'll have two discussion items as well. The first one, Mr. Sexton will discuss the technology items here on the list, and then Mr. DiTillio will discuss the curriculum purchases that we have on the board agenda for tonight. And again, these are all within our long-range plan, they're all within our already established budget for this year. They're all within our already established budget for this year with technology and both with the curriculum purchase. And the board has heard a lot about the adoption of bridges and the implementation of bridges. So those will be specific discussion items for tonight. Important dates coming up, test drive a bus hiring event. This will be the third time we're doing this year. So again, it's an opportunity to engage the community, to come out and actually test drive a bus. And you see many, many signs across the district hiring bus drivers. I think I asked them to change that to always hiring bus drivers. Seems like we are always hiring bus drivers. But we'll definitely want to ramp up our hiring with bus drivers because we'll continue to get retirements through the spring and the summer and then obviously moving into next year. Very excited to highlight the 2024 District Senior Awards and Scholarship Night, Monday, May 6th, 7 to 9 at Adventure Church. And Mr. Lester had alluded to, you talked about this at the beginning, the end of the year is such a great time because we really, it's an opportunity for us to celebrate, to honor and recognize so many great things that happen within our district and for sure for our graduating seniors. And then our next board, regular education board meeting will be Thursday, April 25th, at Liberty High School, so 6:30 at Liberty High School.
All right, good. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Sorry, just looking at the slide. All right, Mr. Jenkins, treasurer's report.
Good evening, board members. I just have a couple of items tonight, but I wanted to make sure that we talked about as a group, something that we have endeavored to do as a school district, which is to be very cognizant of our spend on our second highest area, which is insurance. So you're all aware that we would have had a dependent eligibility audit that would have happened in the fall. And we recently shared the results with our insurance committee, and I'm going to share them with you and the community tonight. We actually verified almost 3,700 dependents that are on our insurance plan, and it's a response rate of 100%. Turns out, just a shade under 1% were ineligible. We'll say a little bit more about that in just a second. They were ineligible, but they were removed by the subscriber. It's not like we had to remove them. And the return on investment conservatively was about $4 to 1. So the process was about 1,388 letters were mailed and a wave one, a follow-up for the 405 or so, 406 or so people who needed to respond by mailing two, and then a final mailing. Most people, as you can see, took the advantage of doing it online. It was very convenient. Some people did both. So I assume they mailed stuff in, then later threw some stuff on online, and then some folks just did strictly mailing. Here's a little bit more about those who were ineligible. Ultimately, 30 dependents were actually identified by the subscriber. There were nine spouses and 21 children identified who were removed from the plan. So those 29 dependents, again, were voluntarily removed by the subscriber based on whether the individual maybe didn't live in the home anymore, was off on their own. We don't ask why. We just simply took the results of what the employee did and moved on. We did unfortunately have one particular dependent where the deadline, despite multiple attempts, was missed. That employee was communicated with, just ultimately was not able to produce what was needed. So of the 3,763 spouses and dependents reviewed, again, 30 would have come off the plan. If you just take our average monthly spend, multiply it by 12, and multiply it then by the 30 people, that's $165,540 in claim savings. So again, averages are dangerous. That does not mean every single person did $5,518 in medical spend. But ultimately, if you were to just simply use averages, that turns out to a 4 to 1 ROI. The program works so well. We've talked with our association presidents. We've talked with our insurance committee. We will now be moving to an ongoing verification system. All new employees will need to verify when they're hired, assuming they take a family plan, that their dependents are valid to be enrolled. And then existing employees, 3% per month over a three-year period will get an additional audit. You won't get hit any more than one time in a three-year period. But that way, it's ongoing, and you're not trying to do 4,000 people all at once in a four- or five-year period of time when you haven't done it in four or five years. So questions about the dependent eligibility audit?
I think you kind of just answered it. So we hadn't done it for a while, so we kind of decided to do it?
Yes.
So I wouldn't expect a 4 to 1 ratio kind of going forward if you're doing it more frequently, right? It'll be kind of more steady state.
Correct. The goal there is, is you go to almost a monthly fee. And that monthly fee is a fraction of the cost of what we paid for the full-blown service that was quite a lot of personnel hours. That's correct. So ultimately, the ongoing cost of, once we established all of our dependents being eligible, now the ongoing cost of making sure everyone stays eligible is far, far less. That's correct.
And we'll, we'd be continuing to evaluate that if we start spending a lot more than what we're seeing in savings there and, you know, come back and maybe go to a more infrequent?
Yes. Yeah, and, you know, it's anecdotal, but it's data-driven when I say that, you know, I've not really dug in and done a deep analysis other than just seeing the reports. We are again having a fantastic year with our loss fund. We are again trending towards making a decision as an insurance committee that we bring forth to the board about our reserves being more than adequate in order to meet our needs. So that's something to kind of put on your radar for a discussion later in the summer, early in the fall. Update on the five-year forecast, and I did not hyphenate five-year. Oh, no. But I have the equanimity to respond under pressure and just keep right on going, although I'll catch the derision of Dr. Dabrico later. So the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, we're having a brief meeting to review the budget numbers on the 16th. That's almost like an ad hoc where just a couple of finance committee members are going to look at next year's proposed budgets. Then the full Finance Committee meeting on April 24th, that's really the first first read of the five-year forecast. The very next night, it will be a first read for the Board of Education. Again, the forecast is going to delve into how key financial factors will impact district operations. And also going to include a section on the impact of the March 19th levy failure. We're going to discuss how to proceed. You know, Mr. Meyer touched on some of that this evening. But certainly, as a board, some of the things that we'll want to discuss or think about in that work session or moving forward are key timelines or things that we, no matter what we want to do, if we're not careful, we have to always make sure we're meeting timelines. For example, you know, if you were to decide for whatever reason to go on the ballot in November, you technically have to back that up 120 days. And so you're looking at a July 8th. So we'll be putting in the five-year forecast an analysis of some of those items, looking at, for example, costs of modulators, costs of overflowing. All of that will be a section of the five-year forecast that will be vetted thoroughly with Finance and Audit and then discussed with the board leadership team. So questions about the five-year forecast?
Mr. Lester, just a point of clarification. Is it called a compound adjective when it goes before noun? It should be hyphenated? Is that what it's called?
I don't know. It's been a little while. He's cut off.
Remember, there's no hyphen in micromanager. So the action items are pretty brief tonight. The minutes from March 21st, a couple of donations, contributions in kind. Wyandotte Run Elementary had some exterior window coverings that were donated by the PTO. And then some material and labor for a butterfly garden, also at Wyandotte Run from Flores Landscaping. And those will be, unless there's a strong desire to pull one out and discuss it separately, I'll ask you to approve those as a consent calendar. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. All right, moving on to public participation. Do we have any public participation tonight?
We do. We have two. The first one is Karina Turner. And Karina would like to speak about the community engaged in a scholarship in an Indian country.
If I pass out, just go the next person and move on. I'm very nervous. Okay.
It's okay. Take your time.
You think as a 50-year-old woman, I'd be used to this. All right, my name is Karina Turner, and I feel compelled to speak to you today on the topic of community-engaged scholarship with Indian country. I take that from the title of this book I will reference. I would like to encourage Olentangie to evaluate the educational practices regarding American Indian education for our students. I hope after the brief presentation, you'll be interested in hearing more. A few years ago, I became involved in an effort to remove the Braves name along with the mascot during your rebranding process. Despite the testimonies I provided from tribal leaders, I failed in the endeavor. On the positive side, I didn't stop learning when you said no. The past few years has been filled with amazing opportunities. I have been blessed to meet many of the people I engaged with during the mascot debate, those who took their time to answer an email from an Ohio stay-at-home mom. I had the privilege of learning from those who are leading their work in the area of history, culture, and language preservation. I'm confident now with what I have learned. I can return to you and encourage the engagement with tribal organizations to improve our children's education in the area of American Indian history and culture. Let me be very clear, I am not saying I have scholarship credentials or I'm an expert in this area. I'm just a parent encouraging the district to improve the education for our students in a particular area and trying to provide you with resources. Where to start? Last fall, I took some of my ideas to a member of your district team. She was great and receptive to pursuing something in the future as a district activity. However, instead of just a few things we discussed, the more pleasing outcome would be to have a long-lasting relationship moving forward with tribal partners. This book speaks on how to meaningfully engage with tribal nations. It has informative essays on how this has occurred with success and without success. Our own Miami University is a glowing example of this community-engaged scholarship. I also have a copy of a community-engaged scholarship that Cincinnati University put together with the Wyandotte of Oklahoma. I'm going to share some of the comments from this book. Any real community-engaged work requires partnerships that are based on, quote, "values of reciprocity." This may mean we need to revisit the Braves name or at least update a few things. Miami University and their journey to remove their mascot and the benefits that came from that is an amazing success story. In our conversations with students about Ohio history, we need to stress that Ohio tribes, with the exception of the Erie, are not just historical but contemporary peoples. It is shocking how many children think the Ohio Indians are all dead. I have a feeling that your teachers would love to be able to rely on good information when teaching about Ohio tribes. I wonder if they feel like they are winging it and doing the best they can with what they're given. What a magnificent opportunity for professional development. The subject reaches every student in the district, not just a few. When we are talking about our children's education, we need to make sure who we are engaging with has the right motivations and credentials. It is safest to engage with federally recognized tribes. Fortunately, we have incredible people we can connect with who fit the bill. We do not need to engage with people who are politically motivated or have agendas. This is a subject for those who truly and genuinely care about their people, Ohio, her history, and her future. Olentangie could be a pioneer in this community-engaged scholarship at the K through 12 level. I can promise you, if you do it the right way, this could be an incredible educational experience for our students. If done the wrong way, it could be a hot mess. I hope you're interested in hearing more, and I am more than happy to offer more information. As the amazing and wonderful Chief Glenn Wallace from the Eastern Shawnee Tribe says, "Talk with us rather than talk about us." Nyawee, thank you and Shawnee.
Ms. Turner, what was the book title again?
Replanting Cultures, and I will give this to anybody who wants it.
And who was the author?
It's many authors, but it's going to be edited by Chief Benjamin Barnes and Stephen Warren.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Turner. Do you have a next one?
Second one is Julia Coglan, and she would like to discuss the use of Braves at Olentangie High School.
All right, Ms. Coglan.
Hi again, everyone. My name is Kay Coglan. My family name is Claude Velter. I am a Class of 1991 graduate of Olentangie High School. I was a lifer in the system back before they called us lifers. And I am here again tonight to call for an end to the use of the Braves identity at Olentangie High School, which was my high school. Applying context is a major component to the skill of critical thinking, which is a skill that we would like all of our students to graduate having, critical thinking. The context I would like to present tonight is that one of our Olentangie High Schools, Liberty, uses the identity of patriots. Many of the people we think of as patriots in the era of the United States War for Independence were actually intimately involved in violent and systematic oppression of indigenous people. This is where we get our Braves identity from. This violence was designed to take away their power and steal their land. Using the identity of patriots and Braves together in the same school district is continuing to uphold the power dynamics of the conquerors and oppressors against the oppressed. This is continued violence against the indigenous people of Ohio, though they are largely not here to represent themselves because they make up less than 0.2% of Ohio's population today. When I did my research, to provide you with examples of who these patriots might be that I'm talking about, one of the first references that I came across was actually a Hall of Shame of U.S. presidents based on their treatment of indigenous peoples. These presidents in order were Thomas Jefferson, Andrew Jackson, Martin Van Buren, Andrew Johnson, James Garfield, and Teddy Roosevelt. While we might not think of all of them as patriots, on this list, both Martin Van Buren and James Garfield were, of course, from Ohio. When we think about patriots, another one that comes to mind is Benjamin Franklin. He himself was known to have publicly called the Iroquois Confederacy savages. Thomas Jefferson wrote a four-step plan to systematically drive indigenous people west of the Mississippi River, no matter the cost. But it was the man many of us would think of as the ultimate patriot, George Washington, who encouraged the practice of putting bounties on indigenous scalps, with each scalp being worth three months' income for a lower-class colonist. And George Washington was the commander-in-chief of the Continental Army in 1782, when, right here in Ohio, 96 unarmed Delaware Indians, who had in fact already converted to Christianity, were massacred, including their children, in Tuscarawas County, which is about an hour and a half from here. All of these were beaten to death, scalped, and burned by American militiamen under the control of George Washington. So I want to say tonight that we cannot ignore this cultural context and historical context. It's continuing to play out here in our school district. It's a violent juxtaposition of the identity of patriots as brutal oppressors of the oppressed indigenous people or Braves. By using these identities alongside each other, we are continuing to choose to ignore context and historical truth. Thank you. And as always, I can provide all of my references if anyone is interested in those. Any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. All right, we are now moving on to our first discussion item. So Dr. Fede, we have our student handbooks.
If it suits you, good evening. We'll knock out three discussion items in a row, hopefully rather quickly. My intent is to just simply see if you have any questions on these three items. Two of them you'll be voting on tonight, and one is a policy first reading that you'll vote on at the next meeting if you so choose. So first, we have all of the student handbooks to present to you tonight. We have a handbook committee composed of administrators from all levels that thoroughly review all of our handbooks every year. We bring these to you every year. They're very minimal changes from the current year's handbooks to the proposals for next year. Were there any questions on the content of any of the handbooks? Okay, next, we have the student fees for next school year. When you review those fees, you'll notice, first of all, the fees all represent, you know, consumable materials. We only ask for what is needed. We only ask for what is needed. Consumable doesn't necessarily mean, you know, consumed edibly, but generally, you'll see raw materials like clay have increased. And then paper, we have some inflationary costs related to books, workbooks specifically. Those are the primary increases that you see. Were there any questions related to any of the student fees?
I had a quick question about the elementary fees. I know that those were done away with fairly recently, correct? Has there been any discussion about whether that is something that we're going to continue long-term, or what, if that might change, and what would make that change?
So, no, we did not have a discussion about bringing elementary fees back for next year. This process began in November is when we began the fee discussion. I do think it is something that we will continue to look at as we discuss, you know, financial sustainability moving forward, but for next year, that was not something that we looked at.
To Dr. Schreiber's point, we should probably, as we have our work session, incorporate our fee strategy as part of that work session.
Thank you for the promotion. I'm not, I'm not a doctor. Jurists, doctors don't count. As many people will tell you, but thank you.
Diamond doesn't in there.
Dr. Fede, can you, I'm sure you were part of the discussions, though, of removing those elementary fees. Can you discuss a little bit about the reasoning why we don't have elementary fees?
If I could actually defer to Mr. Jenkins, he was an impetus behind that, so would you like to discuss kind of the economics behind that?
Sure.
I have a question that goes along with it, which is exactly what those fees were used for before, if you could just explain that.
So it was $30 per elementary student, and they would have been used for consumable materials. In many cases, you know, probably eight bucks or so would have been dedicated to art.
That's correct.
The rest of it, teachers would have been allotted maybe so much per classroom for their bulletin boards, for other things that would be consumed or used throughout the year for student instruction. The homogeneity of the K-5 experience was so apparent that there really wasn't a pressing or strong need. When you paired that with the fact that, I get it, it's $30 a kid, but that totals about $300,000, which on a $350 million budget is not even a tenth of a percent. So the way I like to describe it was, we could provide some welcomed relief for families with young children. You know, maybe three, four children, you're talking to 90, 120, possibly five children, $150 benefit. For us, on the flip side, at $300,000, which I get it, I would love to have $300,000 right now in my pocket, but that was not going to move the needle as far as for creating a stronger need to pass a ballot issue or a need to go more quickly. Said differently, it was something that we could rather easily absorb without straining or causing our budget problems. We cut it off at the fifth grade because of the variation in different electives and other courses. You know, courses at that level can sometimes be a lot more consumables, you know, high school chemistry, high school physics, middle school. But we felt like at the K-5 level that the instructional experience was, again, similar enough across all schools that we did not have to charge those fees.
And I think to add on to that a little bit, you know, we, if you benchmark our fees to comparable districts, I think we're kind of very at-market, if not below-market on many of our fees, particularly the pay-to-play fees for athletics, because we haven't wanted, our philosophy or approach in the past is not to have extraordinary fees, because it limits participation, and I think it can be, could be some unintended consequences of a high-fee structure. So our philosophy has been to keep fees reasonable and low, because you don't want to, you know, feel like we're nickel and dimeing everybody every time we turn around.
And this is actually good foreshadowing for when Mr. Sexton does his presentation here in a few minutes. He will be, in 2000, I think it was 19, we had brought to the board at that time the concept of a technology fee for students, which is something that we currently don't charge, which is fairly common across educational institutions. And the board was not interested at that time, so he will present some of the facts that we did back then to see the board's appetite now for that idea. So your insight on that, along with this discussion here on elementary fees, will be insightful in how we want to move forward with our approach to fees altogether.
Dr. Fede, before you move on, if I could, I would be curious to know what our teachers spend out of their own pocket nationwide, anywhere from $500 to $1,000, teachers spend of their own money in their classrooms. I'd be curious to see what our Olin Tangi teachers estimate out of their own pocket, if that's higher or lower.
And from the PTO, I know from our PTO discussions, a lot of our budget goes to supplementing classroom enrichment and materials.
For sure. And that all helps keep fees down when they do that. You have a number automatically? That's very impressive, Dr. Fede.
No, I don't. I was asking Mrs. Shape if she by chance had collected that information through OTA, and they do not have that as well.
Because that all helps to keep fees down. PTO work and what teachers spend out of their own pocket voluntarily because they see the need.
I mean, well, that and donations, right? So, yeah. I mean, it is really important to think about this holistically, because a dollar is a dollar is a dollar to families, right? And as we, as we look at all of this and sort of how we have to approach it and think about, you know, what our broader, you know, strategy is, right? I mean, Mr. O'Brien's right, it's, there's been a really concerted effort to try recognizing that the community has had to bear a lot of the cost because our state funding hasn't been, you know, as high in the past and some of these other things. So there's been a real concerted effort to keep costs as low as they possibly can be. At some point, you have to look at, you know, making sure that we're still able to operate and provide that experience, but it's really been the goal to keep it as low as possible.
I think it's worthy discussion moving forward, for sure. And then our last discussion item here is Policy 413801. As you may recall, we went through an extensive policy audit, and one of the primary reasons for that audit was to remove policies that were prior to 2011, when we went on to the Neola policy book. The policy before you was a policy that we removed in that audit because it was not a Neola watermark policy that we thought was a old county policy. Since then, Board Counsel has notified us that that was actually a policy that they wrote specifically for this board in 2011 to ensure that non-union classified employees had additional processes in place for them beyond ORC in the event of termination or suspension without pay. It's in the best interest of the employees, so our Board Counsel has advised that we re-adopt this policy. We were unaware that that had occurred back in 2011, that it was written specifically for the board at the advice of Counsel, so we would like to simply re-adopt that policy as written. You'll see, there is one strike through, just from the way it was to the way it would be if we re-adopt it, with just adopting the new APA style of pronouns to "they." So this is just the first reading, and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Sexton with technology updates.
Good evening. From a teacher that I live with, my wife, I can tell you that the Amazon guy shows up about every day with some book, so it feels like a hit to the Sexton budget, so.
In all seriousness.
For what that's worth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you for the opportunity to update you on some purchases and give you a brief tech update. So for the most part, all of these are business as usual, usually around this time, or adding some new software. So Book Creator, which you guys have kind of already been introduced to this evening. Replacement Devices, so student, staff, and classroom will be, I'll take a deeper dive into each one of these in an upcoming slide, but Replacement Software, so this is actually some safety and security software that is replacing a current suite of software that we currently have. So that's a summary of what we'll be covering. Replacement Devices, so the student devices are all on a lease. Okay, we found that a lease allows us to do more with the funds that we have. Okay, so allows us to stretch the dollar. Chromebooks are a big part of that every year. This number, this year is around 5,500 Chromebooks. That's around a normal amount that we replace every year. This will be the first year, though, that we do, it's a four-year lease, but we're going to attempt to keep the Chromebooks for five years. Okay? So we come to that decision based on a lot of ticket data and an analysis of, okay, in that four years, how many break, fix, how many just fail? So we kind of looked at that data and said, okay, we can do five. But the big one was, Google made a change in the way they do things, and they, what they did was extend the updates of Chromebooks to 10 years. Now, that doesn't mean a device is going to last 10 years, as you guys know. So what we'll do is we'll look at that five years and look at the data and make sure that it's something that we can sustain. So we think we can, and so, so again, trying to extend the use of funds even further than we can. The lab devices.
Just for a minute.
Yeah.
The Google thing is kind of a big deal, right?
It is.
So Google had put, in essence, an expiration date on Chromebooks, and that once, after a certain date, you, once you went past that expiration date, basically they bricked the device, right? And so they came under significant pressure to stop doing that, and they finally yielded to the pressure and extended the expiration date on these Chromebooks.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
It was, in essence, a sales tool.
It was, and so for us, like, it forced us to get rid of devices earlier than what we wanted to, because what we do is we try to get, we trade all these in, right? Who's going to want to buy a Chromebook that no longer gets updates? You could still browse, but, you know, with no security updates, you're putting yourself at risk. So, and we definitely don't want to put students or staff at risk with outdated devices.
Chromebooks that stay in our schools for, like, in carts, or these ones that, I apologize, I don't know how ours work.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we are predominantly all cart. So we do have some Chromebooks that do go home. There are special circumstances where, you know, they can sign the lending and lease agreement, and they can take them home, so.
But that's not the, that's not the, even, like, the very small.
That is, yeah, that is, that is less than 100.
Can you just sort of talk about where we're providing these Chromebooks, at what ranges and sort of, because it's different at what, like, K-2 and then 3.5, there's different ratios, right?
There are, yeah. So these 5,500 will cover K-12, so they'll address it at all grade levels. So it's not just one building or anything like that, but, so at the, at the K-2 level is probably the lowest number of devices, and then it starts ramping up in third grade, and then it keeps on going all the way up to grade 12. So, and then, like I said, every year, it's roughly around this number. So it's four years, you can think of like a quarter of our fleet of Chromebooks. We've got, you know, right around 20,000 devices. All those Chromebooks get touched every year. They all get updated. We've got to cut them on a specific level that is supported by state testing.
And obviously, some families choose to bring their own, and they're able to do that, and that's why we're providing it, you know, just so that everybody has the, at those certain levels, not everybody in kindergarten, but as you're going up, that there's opportunities to have those.
Absolutely, yes. So any student could bring their device and join it to the BYOD network, and that, we see that that increases over, you know, as the students get older, there's more devices. And roughly, there's, and that number keeps climbing, and roughly, there's about 75,000 to 80,000 devices on the network every day. So some of those are ours, some of those are theirs. So it just depends.
Do the little ones have, I know that Chromebooks are not, because they're not actually even like typing and like logging a first grader onto something is a whole different ballgame. So are they using other devices like iPads or things like that, or are they just less device reliant? Because some of this also has to do with testing, right? If you're going to test all these kids, I mean, using those, you've got to have those devices.
You do. So to the login question, some, yeah, some of the primary grades use what are called QR codes, and so they can click on it, and then they have their own, their own code, and then they show it to the camera, and then that logs them in. So some buildings have chose not to, chose not to do that. They want them to, you know, log in with their username and password as they get used to it. What we kind of recommend is, you know, K-1, QR code, two, kind of get some prepped for third grade a little bit, and so it's just kind of cascades up, so, and then from there on, they just log on.
My kindergartner, the first time she wanted to do her Lexia and ST math at home, and said, "Well, you just, you just do the card." And we're like, "Well, where's your card?" She's like, "Well, I don't have it," and I had to find the email.
It's in the sleeve.
So we had to find the email from the beginning of the school year with her username and password, because she, obviously as a five-year-old, had no clue what it was.
No, no.
But she was really excited to be able to do her, her lessons at home, that supplement, the things that she does at school.
Absolutely, it makes it very convenient and fast to log in. We just don't want to waste classroom time, you know, trying to type in a, you know, it follows the pattern for logging in. It involves their student ID number and part of their initials, so. So the lab devices, those are more of the higher-end devices, so these are, a lot of them are in high school labs, and they have some of the higher-end software, right? So what we try to do is look at the software, look at the projections, and so we prepare the hardware so that it can last four years or beyond, if it had to, right? So, so it isn't just, we just pick hardware and away we go. It depends on the software. And some of that's engineering software, but a lot of it's like the Adobe suite that's a little more intensive. Also on the list is staff devices. Those are also leased. That is a normal four-year cycle. And this process started, you know, a long time ago. What we did was a trial with staff. We picked, like, well, the big three, right, Dell, Lenovo, and HP. And so we had devices, and we actually got them in the hands of staff and let them use them for a week. And then we surveyed the staff at the end of every week, and then put all that into a rubric and graded it, and we end up selecting Lenovo, right? So a device very similar to the ones that they currently have. So four years ago, it was around 1,800 devices. This year, it's well over 2,200, so it kind of shows our growth, right?
Can I ask too, when you say the four-year replacement cycle, you're not replacing every single computer every four years, is that right? Or are they, are they like on a staggered, like some people's?
Staff are, yes, all the other ones are staggered. Staff are every four years, all of them. And it's all that have a particular model.
So you could think of staff as one vintage, and then student classes or other vintages, right? So you've got vintages to purchase.
Yeah.
When we think about purchasing, too, we're not bidding these ourselves, right? We're going through Meta? Or are we bidding this ourselves?
Yeah, we bid it ourselves, and we toss it out to all the, all the big manufacturers. So also on here, and these are, these are straight purchase, the interactive TVs. So if you've been in classrooms, I think we had a slide, Mr. Meyer had a slide that actually showed one of the Viewsonics in action in the background. So these are targeting classrooms in our older buildings. All the new buildings get these as part of the construction project. And so staff just don't get them, they have to. They have to apply for them and kind of show that they know how to use these. We don't want to put something in a classroom and it just sit there, and it'd be a fancy whiteboard or, or something like that, right? Just, or just a TV, right? So, that integration into the classroom is essential. And they have to go through, it's a must that they go through training. So, that's, that's part of the application process. Currently, we're in round seven. We have one more round to go this year for summer installs. So, and for the most part, these are replacing like older projectors in the classrooms, so.
Can I ask a quick question here?
Sure.
With the required professional development that accompanies the acquisition of new technology, is it strictly the technical use of the device? Or is it also a pedagogical, like, just, excellent?
Answer is yes, all of that. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, and, and part of the application process is more of the pedagogical approach to it, right? So, if you can't integrate it into your curriculum, why have the device?
Yep.
Right, so.
Do we have any more chalkboards?
I don't know. Chalkboards.
No kids are chalk? No kids are banging a eraser, who says punishment?
Living in Shanahan? I don't know.
Showing my age.
I don't know, I don't know. Probably find that answer, I don't know. So, yeah, and so, these devices, and, you know, to, to your point, it, it supports student engagement in the, in the classroom. Some replacement software, so this is, this is replacing a current suite of software from Aristotle K12. So, the light speed suite targets student safety, privacy, and security. And there's really four main components to it. The first one is alert, all right? So, if there is a, a concern, all right, administrators in the buildings will get an immediate email that they can click on to dig further into the situation. Sometimes, we run into it, and they're false positive, they're just doing research in a classroom. But, this software lets us take a deeper dive to say, okay, all right, based on that context, all right, this is fine, all right? No need to dig into it. But, other times, no, and you've got to dig further into it. The other part of that alert is a live person. So, we obviously can't be in front of our computers 24/7. So, if there is something that, that happens that is an immediate concern, the, the administrators in that building will get a call. If they don't pick up, then it keeps going down, you know, down the chain. So, someone's going to pick it up, and somebody's going to need to take, take action on that. We have something similar, but this is just currently, but this takes a much deeper dive in, into that information. Classroom management, it, it's called classroom, right? They're not very creative, I guess. But, classroom puts the teacher in control. So, imagine, you know, all these Chromebooks that we're talking about, imagine a, a class of 20-some students, all with Chromebooks, being able to, as a teacher, I could share my screen to them. They could share their screen to me and present. We can keep them in a particular browser. What do kids do? They open a bunch of tabs, and teacher comes around, they click the tab over, right? So, a teacher can, it never happens. So, what they do, what this allows them to do is to be aware of that and to block other things, keep them focused. They could take an assessment example in Schoology and lock them into that assessment, if they so choose, so. The other part of it is a web filter. This web filter will follow the students wherever they go. It is SIPA compliant, the Children's Internet Protection Act, so that's a, that's a must, and it's a requirement for us. And that, that web filter, it does tie into alert. So, we can dig into those websites if they're doing classroom research. Digital assessment awareness, so this is called digital insights. And what it does is it analyzes the applications being used in the district. So, imagine these applications that we use and putting a dollar amount to those applications, and we can see our return on investment of those applications. We can also see other applications that may not have passed our privacy and security rubric so that we can go and have a conversation and say, hey, okay, you may not want to use that because it's, it's not, not the safest thing in the world, or the privacy doesn't meet our requirement. So, it makes us aware of that. Another big thing is preparation for Senate Bill 29 and making parents aware of what's going on in the classroom and the applications that are being used. So, and that leads us to the, to the parent engagement. This has the possi, the, the potential, if we wanted parents to be able to get a daily report of what's going on from the browsing activity in the classroom, that is something we could set up. It has that potential, if we wanted to go that route.
So, Mr. Seck, when we buy software, do we buy perpetual licenses? Is it SaaS? Do we have the ability to get breakpoints as consumption increases? And then, similarly, on the downside, you know, a lot of software purchases are, you're, you're buying a minimum on a revenue, and if you consume less, you still pay the same.
Right.
So, are we trying to structure it so that we have some flexibility as consumption kind of goes up and down?
Yeah, this, this software is based on FTE count. Yeah, so, as our teachers go up, if it goes up, you know, significantly in the middle of the year, we still pay the same amount. And then, at the, at the, at the renewal time, they're like, hey, did your FTEs go up? Well, yes, they did. And then, we, and they can see them just as easy as we can. And, and then, they, we pay based on that. Some of it's based on student count as well. So, it just depends on, on the particular vendor.
Do we try to get price caps in where upon renewal, it's inflation or CPI or the law of the two? Because a lot of times, the renewals are when they get you.
Right, for sure. And there are some recent things that, that have happened in tech that we've seen that, you know, the renewals are more expensive than a, than a new one. But, usually, we do three-year cycles that lock us in within that three years. So, at the end of that three years, we have the opportunity to go somewhere else or reevaluate the, the cost or renegotiate it. So, but, we always, we always get it locked in or know ahead of time exactly what it is, so it's not a shock to the budget.
And as I recall, in a recent presentation, I think that you and Ms. Fury gave to the board, there were some updates, and you, you stay on top of recognizing what, what software is not being utilized across the district and dropping it. And providing the staff with suggested alternatives that perhaps it's a free version of something or is, but that it's not going to continue to cost the district, we're not going to continue to support software that's not being utilized.
Exactly, right? We continually review that, and there's an extensive process of reviewing software. Digital assets is going to help us significantly with that use.
I thought there was a large number, but I thought there was quite a few items that were getting scrapped because they weren't being used, if I remember right.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, some of those, you know, it just, if they're not being used, why, why pay for them? Like, so, we look at, do we need to revisit and make, we've got to continually make staff aware. If we feel that a resource is, is excellent, then we want to keep using it. But, some of it's awareness, and, and, but some of it's just not used, so we move on. And if we don't have an alternative, we, we look for one. So, I, I'm not going to do the, the kids' justice, so I'm not even going to try.
Did you make a book for us?
I should have, I didn't really, really, yeah, you don't want to see my creativity. But, the, the, the piece that I was really impressed with, with that is, you know, they kind of drew a bike, and then they said, guess what it is? And it turns into a bike? That's, that's what I need. My, my, my art skills are not, not good. But, a few things to highlight in here, this, that book creator is, has been a, a year-long pilot. And, and it fills a, a big creative gap for us that, that we identified in our software offering. Currently, 611 teachers are, are using, and that number grows every day as, as, you know, they see presentations like this, and they're like, I want to do that, right? That's cool. And of course, we would not pick it if it didn't pass our, our security and privacy rubric as we grade each and every piece of software. So, a quick update of some big things that are coming up. This summer, we have the network refresh. That is, that is a big deal. Last summer, we did the wireless, and we did our, our battery replacement. We did that because they were here. This equipment was not here, it was part of the supply chain issue, and it's here now. And so, everything comes back to this equipment. So, our, our wireless access points that deliver, you know, internet and other things to the classroom, our phones come back to the core network. And, I mean, more and more, and devices, our cameras, our security cameras come back to it. So, it's important that this is a solid and reliable piece of, of what we do in tech.
Have we explored just getting rid of the phones? And having teams with voice over IP routed to people's cell phone? Or their Teams device?
We, we have, we have looked into that. It's a...
Because I'll just say, at Nationwide, I don't have a phone anymore.
Right, yeah.
Calls my Teams, and Team calls my cell phone.
Yep. We, we could integrate it in with Teams. And they even make a Teams phone if we had to have a physical phone in the, in the classroom. But, it's that comfort level of, hey, there's an emergency, go right over to my phone. It's integrated in with the paging. So, it's integrated in with a lot of things. And, and obviously, the, the office will use it to page directly into the, into the room as needed. So, that's some of the reasons why we kind of haven't gotten, gotten quite there yet.
Privacy implications too, if someone's using their personal device to get district information, whether it's a phone call or that sort of thing, that we need to think about too, if we were to go down that route, especially since we're a government body versus a private company. Just, I also don't have a phone and haven't had one in a while in my, at my jobs. But, you know, there's just a different layer of, of things to think about when we're talking about government versus companies.
Yeah, they keep giving me a phone. I don't, I use, I use my computer for, for everything, like you guys do. You know, big Teams user, so most of my stuff is, is through that. But, you know, it's, it's, it's an adjustment for, for the classrooms and stuff like that. But, yes, we have absolutely looked into that. And in a previous life, I, I implemented such a thing at, at other districts. But, we had a physical phone in there that was tied to Teams. Another big one, Peach Bowl crossing. So, obviously, that's a, that's a big deal, getting the network, the phones, the devices, and all the classrooms set up so that we are ready come August. Last on the list here is the development of overall technology plan. So, I kind of, kind of mentioned this a little bit earlier. But, that plan is going to include devices, obviously, security, software. And what is devices and software if we're not incorporating that into the instructional technology plan? Those, those devices don't mean a whole, a whole lot if we're not incorporating them into the classrooms. So, keep devices in mind as we take a trip down memory lane. March of 2019, so this was, this was presented to the board. So, this is two different scenarios for a one-to-one program. So, obviously, the, the student counts would, would need to be updated, and we can look at this any way you want, even if you want to look at it at all. So, this kind of ties into the, to the fees discussion. So, this shows a $100 fee and a $50 fee, just as an example, if we wanted to, to entertain a one-to-one program. I, I mentioned that because the development of that technology plan to, I would like, you know, the discussion with the board of whether or not that is something that I should include in the plan or continue down our, our current path. So, March 2019, and then here is a list of some organizations, some, some K12 schools and some higher ed. I cannot tell, I cannot remember back to 2019 and tell you why University of Colorado was included in that with, with, with all the other Ohio schools. Was that it?
That's our only thing we can guess.
That's got to be it then, yeah, yeah, so.
Sure wasn't University of Colorado of Ohio.
Right, yeah, it's a branch office.
I wish.
Yeah. But, this is just some food for thought of, of what some other districts are doing. Again, I can get updated numbers if that's, if that's what we want to do, so.
Rob?
Yes, sir.
I know the treasurer who used to work at Pickerton.
He should, he'll remain unnamed at this point.
There was also a flat $7 per student fee.
Oh, okay.
So, that was, we created a sinking fund for what you have noted, it's exactly right. But, we also threw in a $7 per kid technology fee.
All right. I'll say, hey, Brian, you didn't give me, back in 2019, you didn't give me correct information.
He, he was hard to deal with.
Yeah, yeah.
Question, if you can clarify too, when we talk about one-to-one devices across the district, is there disparity where, for example, say, one, one-to-one from what grade? From six on, from three on?
It would more than likely be three on.
Three on.
I don't know if it's developmentally appropriate for the K1. That's a discussion that we could have to dig into.
Sure, so they, but in, there are some elementary buildings where their K2 classrooms are one-to-one, and it's very likely that it's been one-to-one because of perhaps a PTO purchase or something like that.
Correct.
So, we do have some buildings that are fully one-to-one, and then we have others that aren't.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it, it does play into the equity conversation.
Yep.
For sure. All right, questions? Comments, concerns?
Good update.
Good. All right. All right, thank you.
Were you all about clapping?
Yeah.
It's, uh, I, Mr. D'Attilio, before you go, sorry.
Rob Becker?
No, I just, I do want to thank you for the thorough report because, again, it's very complex in an organization our size when we talk about technology and all that goes into technology, starting with the infrastructure and how important it is for access equity, but also tie into instruction, but for sure, security to, to preserve the integrity of our network is extremely important. And again, our technology department does an excellent job to serve over 24,000 students and 3,000 staff members in the district, because it is very complex.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. D'Attilio, instructional resource purchases.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. Thanks for giving us the time tonight. I'm joined by two of my team members, Dr. Kristen Bordage, who's our Assistant Director of Secondary Curriculum, and then, this is Mindy Schultz, who's our Assistant Director of Elementary Curriculum. I'm going to pass it to them in a second, but I thought I'd get us started. We are here tonight to ask for your approval of, of two instructional material purchases. One of them is broken down into kind of two separate pieces. We'll explain that later, but it's really two, two different purchases. And before we do that, what I think is important, that we just take a little step back and explain the process that we go through to bring something to the board for approval. And that process always starts for us with the student experience. Like, we're here to improve that student experience. We're here to spend district dollars on things that maximize student learning. And we, I would say, I think, when you see the process that we've went through, we do a really nice job and thorough job of vetting these things and making sure we make the best possible decision for kids. And these phases that we go through aren't always a year, but sometimes they are. These processes drag out because we're very thorough. We want to make sure that we start with the curriculum and see what teachers are currently doing, what the current gaps are in the curriculum, maybe where the needs are. Maybe they don't know something else we already have. Trying to go through and make sure we take an inventory of what teachers' needs are. And once we identify those, that's kind of coupled with like curriculum revision process, we'll identify an area of need. And then, we kind of move into the curriculum department of researching what's out there to fill that need. What are other districts using? What's, you know, what's on Ed reports or other sites that evaluate resources for their credibility? We usually pick two or three to pilot, and I think we're also pretty picky about what we call pilot. We're just not giving teachers access. We're actually asking them to utilize the materials with students, go through professional development. development, give us feedback, I mean, have us go out and see teachers use the resources. Really, the pilot teachers take on a lot of responsibility to give us feedback and that typically has helped us make the choice pretty easy because the teachers are pretty candid about what they like and they don't like. So that's where we kind of move into that purchase phase, you know, which we're here today with two resources for that. And then Phase Three and Four are really, really important. And I would argue that I've been part of other adoptions as a teacher that haven't had. Phase Three and Four, they just kind of drop the box in your room and walk away. It doesn't work, right? I mean, many, many people have experiences like that. So the training and support of staff is huge. And I added support also because it's not just about going to a professional development, ooh, that was nice, going through a professional development session, but it's also about us supporting them in the classroom. And that's where our instructional coaches come in. And we've talked a lot about our math instructional coaches before, but our LIT support, you know, department heads at the secondary level, they're also supporting those teachers when they have questions. Sometimes they're able to answer them before they get to us. And then Phase Four, and this is one that's really, really important, is that we continue to evaluate the effectiveness and what do teachers need? Do they need more PD? Do they need, do they need something else in, you know, in respect to a different gap? But just making sure that you understand that we kind of go through this cycle of phase with resources and we're kind of juggling multiple different subject areas and things at a time. Before we pass it over to Mindy and Kristen, I just do want to say thank you to them. They put a lot of work that I think sometimes we don't see behind the scenes. And some of it's logistical stuff that's not a lot of fun to get these purchases ready for the board. And then also the teachers that spend time with them giving feedback. And also parents, one thing I didn't mention, also in Phase Two, we also have a continuous improvement committee made up of parents. Both of these resources went through that committee. The parents got access to the resource, they had discussions, they asked good questions. We had some dialogue around that also. So just thank you to all those folks who make it happen. It's not just kind of us sitting and making those decisions. So I'll pass it over to Mindy first and she's going to talk a little bit about our Bridges adoption.
Okay. Thank you, Vince, for giving that overview. So what I'll be doing now is I'll be talking about the details of the Bridges adoption with that overview in mind, that we followed that same process as well. So we're currently in the first year of the kindergarten through fifth grade Bridges Math Curriculum Adoption. And so, like I said, I'm going to start with this overview, starting kind of stepping back to last year. So during the 22-23 school year, we conducted a thorough assessment of various math curriculums. We evaluated their alignment to our Olin Tangi math model. And this process was extremely comprehensive and it involved trying these within classrooms, both in primary and intermediate, across the entire district and every single elementary school. And we also gathered valuable input from educators, from school leaders, from members of the community regarding these curriculums. Based on that feedback, Bridges in mathematics, it emerged as the standout curriculum resource that was officially approved for adoption. So that took place last year. So here we are this year, the 23-24 school year, and this is our first year of the Bridges adoption. And with this first year, we're currently, have adopted, implementing Number Corner and Bridges Intervention. Number Corner offers a structured approach to skills, practice, and exploration of fundamental math concepts. The lessons are carefully crafted to introduce, reinforce, and extend skills and concepts that align with each grade level's curriculum. And then the Intervention Kits are what, it's a math resource designed to provide targeted support for students. It offers brief, focused instruction to enhance specific math skills and concepts. By building on students' existing knowledge, this resource aims to help all learners develop a strong foundation in mathematics. To ensure the success of the implementation of both of these, we've had a variety of professional development experiences that have provided our teachers and administrators this year. So first, the Math Learning Center, which is the company that developed the Bridges curriculum and really leads that math research, conducted training sessions for all K-5 teachers, administrators, and math specialists in Number Corner. Also, ongoing professional development has been provided and that's been able to happen side-by-side with teachers due to the phenomenal work of our math coaches in every building. And I'm also proud to share that due to our detailed feedback that we would constantly give Math Learning Center, that they actually sought us out to pilot a newly-designed Bridges Intervention Training. And it was phenomenal. So this year, we participated in that. It was multiple days and that's where we had a team that included teachers, math coaches, and an intervention specialist from every single building that supported that professional development. And what that ultimately does is supports the differentiated and the data-driven instruction that contributes to the continuous improvement of math learning across our district. Okay? So now we're heading into next year. So this is the year that the last pieces of that puzzle of our Bridges adoption finally come together. We will be implementing the full Bridges Third Edition, which includes Concept Quest as well. Bridges Third Edition is a comprehensive math curriculum designed to engage students in mathematical learning through hands-on activities, problem-solving tasks, and real-world applications. This curriculum focuses on building students' conceptual understanding of math rather than the memorization of procedures. It emphasizes the development of critical thinking skills, problem-solving strategies, and mathematical reasoning. It offers a balanced approach to math instruction, incorporating both skill practice and exploration of mathematical concepts. The curriculum is structured to support all learners, providing opportunities for differentiated instruction and addressing the diverse needs of students. Bridges Third Edition aims to create a positive and enriching math learning experience for students, helping them develop a deep and lasting understanding of mathematical concepts with the goal of positioning students as mathematical doers, knowers, and sense makers. Concept Quest, which is included in the Bridges Third Edition, provides horizontal enrichment that builds on concepts in the Bridges curriculum while reinforcing and extending grade level So we think about how are we going to be measuring the success of the Bridges curriculum adoption? And this involves various aspects to ensure its effectiveness. So I'm just going to share a few key ones that we will be focusing on. So first is student performance, which is where we evaluate through standardized tests, universal screener data, benchmark assessments and checkpoints which are provided through the state's readiness assessment. Learning outcomes, which is where in the classroom, we use classroom-based data to determine whether students are achieving at that desired learning outcome. And then engagement and participation is a key piece. And this is where we monitor indicators such as attentiveness, interest and willingness to participate in class discussions and problem-solving activities. But then also collecting that stakeholder feedback. So we collected that during the adoption process, but it needs to be ongoing. And so with that, we will be initiating that collection from teachers, from administrators, from parents, and students through a variety of ways, such as surveys, focus groups, et cetera. But also that resource utilization, it goes back to what Vince had shared, we want to make sure that it's all being utilized and that through that monitoring, we can see where does ongoing support need to take place, where does professional development need to be continued, and what might be some future purchases that we need. And so, we're going to hear from some Olin Tangi teachers who are...
You know, I've been teaching math in Olin Tangi for several years. Our kids always do really well on games assessments and state assessments. What I'm discovering this year with Bridges is that a lot of those same kids don't really have a solid understanding of the why behind what they're doing. And I feel like that is what's important, the conceptual understanding of what is going on and why things are happening and working the way they work is so important because it allows students to know when processes are going to work and when they won't work and why they are going to work at that particular time and then to change their thinking moving forward. So I feel like it's really important for them to have that solid understanding of math, to know how to apply math in different ways. And as I said before, I think the curiosity piece and asking questions and becoming naturally curious about math so that they start to ask the why and they start to wanting to know more about it themselves is going to allow them to be much more successful moving forward in math.
It is going to carry over from one grade to the next, from one school to the next, you know, if a kid moves. I think that helps with facilitating that maximum learning. Also, allowing for every student to be a part of the learning in whatever way that looks for them. Facilitating maximum learning doesn't mean it's just like these amazing test scores, right? It's more about the whole student and it's about the progress. And it's not just always about the end result, it's about how to get there and learning those skills. And I feel like the strategies and the tools that we're providing for them help them learn how to get there and make progress wherever they are.
And I just, to finalize, I want to share just a few kind of celebrations. Just today, I was in a meeting with a math specialist and she shared that one of her teachers, who was very proud of her math instruction, had kind of boxed up some of her past resources because of this Bridges adoption, but held on to them and has now, since then, completely gotten rid of them. She said, "There is nothing that I can do that is better than this." I also had a conversation with another teacher who said that she has a student and his goal for his behavior is to get to lead Number Corner within the classroom and that's the one thing he really wants to do. And so that opportunity to get up in front of that class to be that leader and have that experience for our students is, it's just phenomenal. Those are just two of the many stories. Every time I'm out in buildings, having conversations, working with our math coaches, these are the stories that are coming time and time again. And also, getting to work with our early adopter teachers, which two of them you just saw today, it's exciting for what's happening with math instructional in Olin Tangi, so.
Good evening. I'm going to share a little bit about requests to adopt McGraw-Hill Resources for Middle School Social Studies, grade 6-8. Vince did an excellent job providing an overview, so I'm going to kind of breeze through some of this. The overview stands for secondary. And in this case, the only different feature I'd point out, you see a group of teachers there, that's that first image. We convened a group of representative teachers, actually last May. We start our resource adoption and renewal process in May of every year, getting ready to hit the ground running in August when we come back to the school year. So I have a group of 16 middle school social studies teachers who volunteered to be part of the resource adoption process. We did some design thinking, we used design thinking, the design process to develop a set of competencies that we want all learners to have in middle school social studies. And that's our Olin Tangi brand on social studies that facilitates maximum learning for us in this local context. Of course, we use the Ohio Model Curriculum for social studies, that's our anchor document for the curriculum and what learners in 6-8 need to know and need to be able to do to be good historical thinkers, as one example, that's broad category of this document. But then we really, through that design process, said, "What else? What takes it up a notch for us?" And so what you see here are a set of competencies that we have worked to define and articulate in ways of establishing what students will do in social studies. So if you remember the team from Liberty Middle School that was here end of February, they had the images, they were talking about this idea of having a set of core skills that will define any topic. I think Danielle Gillespie was sharing the Magna Carta, I think, maybe? Does anyone remember? I think that's what, I was trying to remember what it was. And really focusing on academic literacy and cultural awareness and inquiry through that lens of that topic area. So really trying to define how learners engage in social studies. The beauty of this process is that this now becomes the lens through which we look to examine the resources that we wish to adopt. So resources need to meet these criteria. They're all going to have the standards. Every resource, every publisher, they have to align to standards. But which ones are going to make the most sense for us and what we say facilitates maximum learning, in this case, 6-8 social studies? So in this slide, I'm showing that we tested the model, so using design thinking processes. We built the prototype. I had a team of expert consultants, outside consultants, build a learning experience that teachers engaged in. And we actually tested that prototype, that this, these competencies embedded into an inquiry about ancient India. And that was super exciting because that gave us that, just that experience that these competencies are right for us. So simultaneous to that, we're looking at resources, right, as a team of 16 teachers and Shane Schoeff, curriculum supervisor, myself, Vince, others. And what we landed on, we narrowed it down, as Vince said, to three. This particular resource stood out to us and I've highlighted in the yellow there why, just a very strong resource for engaging learners in the inquiry process. In social studies, that's vital to how we're defining how students do social studies in 6-8 here at Olin Tangi. Really engaging in those academic pursuits of finding the most reasonable answer is the way social studies folks define inquiry. So I'm highlighting here the standout feature for us, in addition to helping us help learners meet standards, just a very strong emphasis on inquiry. Our next steps are to, if this resource is adopted, we will be providing professional learning and support with the new curriculum. Those competencies that I showed you, our brand on social studies learning here at the district, as well as with the resource. We are now building a menu of options for teachers to engage with the new curriculum and the new resource. We will, we always collect and use ongoing feedback from teachers at the secondary level. We also engage students in giving their feedback and input. And then going forward, we will be able to, after we live with it for next school year and really sink into the resource and all it has to offer, we will be able to evaluate the resource for its effectiveness on facilitating maximum learning for every student. And we will do that via the, those skills that I mentioned, those competencies that we are using to define the student learning experience in 6-8 social studies. Each competency has a rubric associated with it. We will also continue to collect and use teacher and student feedback to make decisions about the kinds of targeted professional learning that we must engage in order to support our entire community with the launch and success of this new resource. Thank you.
Any questions, Scott?
No questions.
Just a couple, if you can go back to the slide on student performance. How will you measure that? Is that just, we pull up our state report card or, keep going back, it's slide forty-one? Yes.
Yeah, so with student performance, we'll look at a variety. So we would consider, obviously, performance on state standardized assessments, but also when we look at our universal screener, we have a student growth percentile that goes with that universal screener data that...
Is that an expect? Did growth, like, are you saying, how are they comparing, kind of like an EVA thing or?
So what we can do with that particular data, the student growth percentiles, we're showing how the students are growing in comparison to others who started at that same band from the fall. We look at like fall to winter, winter to spring. And then we can compare that overall to see how has our overall student growth per data, student growth data increased or decreased over time when it comes to looking at historical data as well as the current?
So how will you know Bridges was successful?
Well, we would be looking at those pieces to look for increases. So for example, actually, with one of the Bridges fifth-grade teachers, one of the pilot classes, he looked back at his overall student growth percentiles from the past years of his math instruction and compared that to the current student growth percentiles of his students now and saw an increase in students who reached, so when we look at that student growth percentile, we want it to be, if it's 45 to 55, that's showing that they're holding steady. If it's at 55 or above, so 65, 75, 85, 95 student growth percentile, that's showing that they're growing at that faster rate compared to other students who started at that same band. And so what he's seen is a significant increase in students that at all bands, so meaning students who started in that well below, or let's say that well above, and that he's seeing an increase in that overall growth that he's within his student, so.
So do we measure at all a student, so they'll come in, if you're using OD, they're OST data, to come in at third grade, not with Bridges? I'm trying to see a pre and post, like, I want to see, because you can always say, well, this policy helped us to... I want to see, because you can always say, "Well, this policy helped us to," politicians are great at this, "this policy helped us to not have so much inflation."
It's why we, you're right about, because you're talking OSTs. So you're right. It's why we really do value the data that we get from our AIMS Web Plus, our universal screener, and why we value looking at multiple data points. Because, like you shared, I mean, there's complexity that goes into why, you know, why a student's score is, and it's, that SGP data is really powerful to us. Because it's also data that we can look at with the student right in front of us and make actions in that moment for those children.
That's what I'm looking to hear, is individual student, because you can't compare last year's fourth grade with this year. They're totally different.
They are. They're different.
Creatures.
Yeah.
But when you drill it down to little kids, and before on third grade, they were here, and now with Bridges in sixth grade, or what, Bridges only goes through fifth, I think you get what I'm going at.
I do, and that's why that OST data is part of it. It's one, like, I always think about looking at data in that triangular data, right? I want to look at multiple data pieces. But it is why we really value, not to say don't value OST data, because I do, but I also really value that AIMS Web Plus data, the universal screener data that we're getting on the students who are in front of us. And we also then can look back historically, how has this student grown with the math instruction in kindergarten, in first grade, in third grade? Are we seeing an impact on that student's growth percentile now that Bridges is taking place in their classroom? And that's also the data, too, that we use to make moves on students right now.
So 100% of this, and this might be for you, or you, or treasurer, superintendent, anybody, so this would qualify as something that's 100% of funds going to spend on classroom instruction?
Yes.
Because this is a big chunk of money.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's, absolutely. It's surround sound.
I love it.
You're talking about all of the things we talked about as far as professional development, not just dropping a box in a classroom, assessing student outcomes, assessing student learning, assessing progress, absolutely 100%.
And just by implementing Number Corner alone, so we, like I said, we started with Number Corner this year, which is a 20-minute piece of that math classroom. We're seeing preliminary data that's showing an increase in those SGP's. And looking at, so within AIMS Web Plus, there is, there's multiple measures that they're assessed on with math, but there's one in particular that is called Concepts and Applications, and it's how the student is actually applying math knowledge to overall skills, math skills. And looking at that student growth percentile from teachers past and previous student growth percentile of students as a teacher overall, looking at their classroom, they've shared the successes of that. We don't have exact data at this moment to show that. It'll take some time, but we've just been really excited about that piece already.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, that teacher purge testament is the real deal, because I've been out of the classroom for a long time, and I still have boxes of teacher resources that I developed and accumulated. Like, can't part with stuff.
She threw them away.
That's like that.
And they were hers. They were hers. They were things that she had purchased that are her own, and she said, "But now that we're supporting as a district," right, like, and she said, "There is nothing that I will do that's better." And it was also a teacher that was hesitant for the shift, because as we know, right, we've perfected our practice, right? And so she's a veteran teacher who has made a total shift because of what she's seen from her students.
That speaks volumes. Thanks for sharing that.
Thanks, thanks so much. And thanks for just really being so thoughtful and comprehensive in this. These complicated things, right, but you're approaching it from such a place of thoughtfulness, and it comes through in the presentation, and I hope it comes through to the community, too, that this isn't a slapdash sort of thing, that it's, there's a really high degree of intentionality that goes into it. We do make these very large purchases, right? So we're backing it up, and we're making sure it's the right thing to do, so, thank you. Okay, I think that's the last of our presentations, unless anybody else wants to jump in. Good. All right, so the first that we have is a board consent action item, which I suppose I will recommend, which is approval of Brian Elsinger to join as a new member of the Facilities Committee. Mr. Elsinger, actually, I think we met him at Hyatt's Middle School, and he came to a community conversation to learn about the levy, so, you know, just pitch for coming out and learning about things and then getting involved. And then I think as the materials in the case come to a couple of those meetings and bring some expertise, so we're glad to have him on. So can I have a motion to approve Mr. Elsinger?
So moved.
Right, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just want to, I know we're long, but this is exactly what our process was supposed to do with communication, and the whole levy, all of those discussions were worth it for just him joining that committee because he already's come, already making an impact. So just a home run. He moved to Olentangie from out of the state, out of the state, did all his research, and felt that this is a home run for his kids, so just thrilled to have him come to Olentangie.
Yeah, that's great. All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jenkins, will you present the treasurer consent action items?
Mr. Lester, I have this evening two items that I'm asking the board to consider by motion and second for one single vote, but the two parts are Part A, the recommended approval of the March 21st, 2024 meeting minutes, and then Part B, recommend the approval of the noted donations. Again, I'm asking that those be adopted by one motion and vote unless the board would like to pull them out and discuss them separately.
Would anyone like to pull those out separately? All right, hearing no desire to do that, can I have a motion to approve the consent action items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Meyer, the superintendent items.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lester, and board members. I recommend approval of the following superintendent action items. A, specific human resource items for certified staff. B, specific human resource items for classified staff. C, approval of seniors for early graduation. D, approval of student overnight and out-of-state field trips. E, approval of the 2024/25 student handbooks. F, approval of the 24/25 student fees. G, approval of business management and facility items. H, approval of technology items. And I, approval of curriculum items. I'm asking you to approve these items by one single action and vote unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
All right, would anyone like to discuss any of these items separately? All right, hearing none of that, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Yeah, a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Okay, so we will then move to adjourn, unless there's, may I say anything else?
So moved.
Second.
Good. Any, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned.
All right.